We will now convene the 10 September meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. You'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two items tonight. One is an update from the Director of our C P D, so we'll start with Director Butler.
The City Commission. I'll probably start out, even though it's not first on my list, with probably the issue that people are most curious about, and that was the recent arrest operation that we were involved in with DEA and FBI and some of our local law enforcement partners. I thought the local media did a fairly good job of reporting what happened, and of course we had the press conference in Topeka. Thank you. As you know, from information that's been made public already, this investigation started about three years ago, long before my appointment to the R C P D. When I arrived here, I received an update on what had been going on and the direction it was going. And one of the questions that has been asked or comments that have been made to me, and I think it's important to give you some of my perspective, is that people were surprised that there was such a severe drug problem in Manhattan. That's the way it's been characterized to me, that how can a ring like this be operating at that level with such dangerous drugs and nothing had happened? Well, the answer to that, from my perspective, is I think what happened here is Manhattan is a safe community, and Manhattan did not have a major drug trafficking operation operating for an extended period. There were some people living here who had relatives from another large city, Chicago, and I think just through those relationships, they recognized that there was an opportunity here because oftentimes these types of organizations face competition. And I think they realized that there wasn't that same level of competition that they might have been used to where they were from. And sometimes that competition could be more dangerous to them than local law enforcement, if you know what I mean. And if you don't, I'll be more specific. Sometimes the competition will use violence to get rid of the competition. So they came down here and they started selling drugs, and they found a market that was really, again, uncompetitive with other folks doing the same thing. And within a few months, I think, of this really taking off about three years ago, our officers and detectives became aware that something was going on, and they started investigating. And as they investigated, they were starting to connect some dots. And then we had the unfortunate overdose death of a K-State student, and they were able to collect evidence in that case that really strengthened the investigation that was already ongoing, which was, I wouldn't call meandering, but they were still trying to figure out the scope of the problem here. That unfortunate overdose death really helped them put more of the case together. And then in many cases like this that go on this long and result in this number of arrests, sometimes there's some luck involved, too. Things just happen to fall into place that don't always fall into place during the course of an investigation. Make no mistake, there was a lot of hard work that went into this, the officers, the detectives, but there was enough information, and the scope of it was large enough, that when we proposed to the Drug Enforcement Administration that they join us, and the reason why we asked that is because they have resources, investigative resources, that we are aware of, but it's just not reasonable for us to maintain and keep up all the time because we don't need it all the time. Very expensive and very difficult to maintain these types of resources. So they got involved, and when they did, that helped us build the case even farther, further than where it was. Really, it came to a conclusion when, you know, the leads that we were following just reached a point where it really wasn't developing a lot of tremendous new leads, and we felt like, okay, we think we've got a handle on the majority of this issue, so let's go to the U.S. Attorney and seek indictments, and that's what we did. And it just happened to be 55 indictments, which was rather large. I didn't realize at the time, when the U.S. Attorney made his comments, that it was the largest investigation of its type in Kansas. That was news to me, so I learned that about the same time all of you did. But I want you to know, it's, I know cognitively people understand this when you say, "A lot of hard work went into this, a lot of sacrifices were made by detectives," but it really is hard to wrap your mind around just how much went into a case like this to put it all together, just how fortunate we are as a community to have dedicated officers and detectives and federal partners who are willing to assist us in executing this plan to arrest these people and get them off the street. We oftentimes think when something like this happens that we're all of a sudden going to see this tremendous reduction in crime and quality of life, and oftentimes you don't really notice it as much. I'm not really sure what's going to happen in this case, but this group that was taken out of commission was really operating independently for the most part, so there was no other competition. I'm sure others will take notice of that and will try something similar, but I want to assure you that we're going to remain vigilant, like I said during the press conference, to stay on top of this and make sure, or try our best to make sure it never reaches the level that it did in this case. So before I move on to other items, I wanted to give you a chance to ask any questions or make any comments about this.
Could you explain, maybe to the degree you can at this point, kind of the pyramidal shape of the organization that was taken out, the 55? You know, you've got kind of your street distributors, then you've got distributors, and you've got the guy that's the go-between, or maybe more between that and Chicago?
Yeah, I have to be a little vague here. There was about, there were six really main players, I think, in this investigation that were, you know, probably the ones that drove a lot of the other activity. Some of the activity by others wasn't as consistent as these main folks. It was opportunistic in some cases, you know, they were in the right place at the right time to be able to facilitate some drug sales. Oftentimes, these sellers were users as well, and that was part of their motivation for participating. But, and I said this during the press conference in Topeka, and I want to reiterate this, we often hear in the media, social media especially, about drug use, drug sales especially, you know, being victimless. People in prison for possession of marijuana, that is untrue. People who are arrested for possession do not go to federal prison, they don't go to state prison. They're lucky if they go to state jail, oh, excuse me, your local jail. People that go to prison for drug offenses are distributors. They are people who are engaged in activity that while they may not be directly causing harm to people, there are other people engaged in that enterprise that are. And that means sometimes it's violent, sometimes it's theft. There's a lot of crime associated with drug sales and drug use. I've read various research papers and studies over the years about the population in our state and federal prisons, and a good 70 to 80 percent are connected to some sort of substance abuse or substance use or distribution. So drugs play a big part in criminal activity, and there are victims. And in this case, a young man died as a result of the drugs that were sold to him that he thought were one thing but contained something a lot more dangerous than what he anticipated.
Did we find out anything new about maybe fentanyl or the use of opioids and distribution?
I don't know if we found out anything new, other than what, we confirmed things we already knew before, and, for example, fentanyl is such a dangerous substance to handle that the KBI sent out new protocols for local law enforcement when we collect what we think is fentanyl. In the past, drugs collected on the street were often field-tested to confirm or create probable cause that that is what we thought it was. Fentanyl is so dangerous in minute quantities, we don't even field-test it anymore for fear that an officer could ingest it accidentally, get it on their skin and absorb it, and become seriously ill or die. So not only do we not field-test it anymore if we think that's what it is, we don't single-bag it when we collect it, we double-bag it. It's the only drug that the KBI requires us to double-bag, and that's for the safety of their own personnel as well. That's how dangerous that stuff is. And when you buy drugs off the street from a dealer or somebody who is your friend, you never really know what you're getting or in what dosage or quantity. And my message to the public is if you are dealing with any kind of opioid drug, whether it's heroin or some pill, or don't take the word of the dealer that it is this, because fentanyl is a cheap way to increase the potency of drugs, and when you're an addict, when you have an addiction, when you have that illness, that addiction is very attractive, and they often sometimes don't care, and they hope that it is a different high than what they're used to because that's what they want. It's very dangerous. So nothing new, just reemphasizing what we already knew, and we hope the public is listening.
All right.
There's also been, you've heard me talk about this probably since the second month I was here, and I just want to clarify something. As you know, we've been holding some retreats with the command staff and separately the Law Board, and in the future, there'll be a joint one between the command staff and the Law Board. And this is to explore and develop the relationship internally and also between the two entities. Also, it's planning for the future, goals and objectives, vision planning, things like that. When we have these conversations, you know, the facilitator encourages us to be very creative and pie in the sky and open-minded. Now, the part about needing more space is nothing new. You've heard me talk about that for a few months. In the context of how this was reported, I said, "There are several options." For example, and I discussed all those options, but the way it was reported was, "We need a new building." Now, I don't know what the end result will be of our space needs issue, that was just one issue, so I want to reassure you, I'm going to keep talking about this, and we're going to keep exploring what we need to do to create more usable space for our department, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we expect there's going to be a new building on the hill and we're going to abandon the one we're in to accommodate those needs. So I just wanted to reassure you of that. I've mentioned previously a survey that I sent out to my employees, and I received the results, and I have set up several internal committees to work on a variety of issues. Those issues encompass the records management system, paperless reporting, you've heard me talk about that in the past. We had an in-car camera project that had been stalled for some time. There were some technical issues that the vendor was trying to work out with us, and there were just a lot of delays that I don't even know what caused it. But when I arrived and saw that happening, our body cameras were fine and working, but I made it a priority that we get these in-car cameras installed and operational. We just set up our first car last week, and everything is going very smoothly. So because of that result, now we're going to finish the installation to our front-line marked patrol cars and get that done. I know our prosecutors want that in-car camera video, and so it'll be in addition to body camera footage that we have now, so we're going to continue working on that. Also, the crisis intervention team, we're still developing that. It hasn't been finalized yet, but we're making good progress on it. We have a uniform and equipment committee looking at the current uniforms that officers wear on patrol. Their biggest concern expressed to me was how uncomfortable these uniforms are. I've worn it, it is uncomfortable, so we are allowing them to explore options on something that might be more comfortable for them to wear on a daily basis. If you have been, you've probably seen these before, but for example, during the Saturday football games, officers that direct traffic after the game, they set out cones beforehand, and they were wearing their regular-duty uniform to do that. So I received a request before the football season started if they could wear what we call a soft uniform. Our SROs wear this uniform quite a bit, much lighter weight, much more breathable, not as formal-looking, but still, you can tell they're police officers. So I said, "Yes, go ahead," and the feedback on that has been phenomenal. They love it, it's more comfortable, they're so thankful to be a little more comfortable in what they're doing on hot days or when they're exerting themselves, setting out cones and directing traffic. So they're looking at a whole host of uniform issues. Don't know what they're going to come back with, but I told them to be reasonable, and we'll look at costs, and we'll look at phasing if costs are too high, but we're going to try to do all this within our existing budget over the next few years, no matter what they come back with. There's other committees there we have set up, but I won't go into all of that unless you want me to. Just in general, 2019 budget progress, we are under budget right now, which is, you know, I watch that every month very closely, so we are a little over budget in some areas, which is normal. We talked about that in our 2020 budget proposal, like in overtime, so we've exceeded our overtime budget. That's something that we're going to continue working on in future proposals to try to get that in line with what our normal expenditures are for our efforts out there. But overall, the budget is about 2 percent below where the budget year is right now, so I'm satisfied with that. Couple of things Mayor Dodson brought up to me, and I wanted to give you all a quick report on this. There's not much to report, but I wanted to give you an update. One of the things he asked me about a few weeks ago was to identify numbers and locations where our homeless population might be living or congregating. And there's been some traditional locations, but some of you probably know where they are, and we've had our patrol officers out scouting this, and we've seen some of our homeless population that we're familiar with, but the locations that they've traditionally stayed, they're not there right now. So it's difficult for me to say, you know, "In this location, every night, there's five people here, or there's four people there." They're not really sure what the deal is, but they're not where they have been historically in the community. So I've asked them to continue monitoring the situation to let you know. And just for the listeners who aren't aware of this, I think this question was in the context of housing, you know, establishing some housing for homeless population, not because the mayor wants us to find where they are and run them out of town. That was not the purpose of the request, as I understood it. Also, you had asked about simplifying parking enforcement on private property, specifically signage and how property owners could deal with that. I got a report from my staff about the historical nature of this. I know the city attorney, Katie Jackson, was also part of the discussion with my staff. And it's not, it's not a simple resolution, in my opinion. The straightforward solution is amending the city parking ordinance that would completely remove the police from dealing with parking on private property that is not involving criminal activity. But my understanding from what the city attorney, and if I'm wrong about this, I hope she corrects me, is the way Kansas law reads if a property owner initiates that tow without a ticket being issued, and then the owner of the car does not make the tow operator whole and his cost, then it comes back on the property owner to pay the towing company for all of their towing and storage fees. So the reason years ago that the decision was made to have the police given authority to issue citations and initiate the tow was so the property owner would not be subjected to those costs for towing and storage. This is new to me that it's done this way. In the past, it's been the property owner signs their property, if they don't want somebody there, they initiate the tow, the towing company and them have an agreement about who pays for that tow. Typically, the owner would then reimburse the towing company, but it was a chance they would take. They didn't come back except for maybe an agreed-upon initial tow amount, but the storage and all that would be on the towing company. So I don't have a suggestion for you that's formal at this point, we can continue looking at this. What we have in place in Manhattan apparently is common in some of the larger cities in Kansas, but not the smaller ones. The smaller ones basically handle it the way that I had described. So I'll answer any questions you might have, but I thought it would be a little more straightforward to extract us from this, but yes, there was a history as to why this happened, and it makes some sense to me. I don't know what your business property owners would say about changing this. I suspect there would be some pushback about shifting that liability, that financial liability to them, but I don't know, might need a conversation with them about it.
Yeah, I think the only other thing that is worth looking at as part of this is when we get more than 50 parking spots to look at what's reasonable for the number of signs.
And that would, I think that's in the ordinance, so...
The ordinance says something specific for 50 and below. You have to have one for every 10. When you get above 50, then it's up to the R C P D. That's the part that's nonspecific that I think needs to be sorted. I mean, it could be as simple as having one sign at every entry point or whatever it is, so...
And I believe, and I don't have it with me, I believe that we do have a standard operating procedure that outlines what that criteria is, so I'll have staff look at that and see if there's a modification they can make that would make it less costly for the property owners, if that's what you're suggesting.
With regard to that, I think we are, I am interested in following up with regard to enforcement, and I don't care whether it's the Code Office or the Police Department. I want something that's very straightforward so that everybody knows, and it's not as vague as people keep telling us now about what the proper procedures are. So when you say, "Oh, it's on my property, on the neighbor's property," who do we call? And we always have this discussion about, is it on private property, is it on public property? And then we have this bus in City Park we can't get rid of. So, but, so I think, for one, I'm interested in pursuing it, and I know that yours is a different issue than ours, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I was on a conference call, I'm on this Justice Involved Youth and Adolescent Committee, and they work with jails and adolescents and corrections officers and mental health. One of the organizers, one of the directors is part of C I T, so I was happy to discuss that because we were getting more and more involved in the crisis intervention teams, as well as the stabilization center. I believe that's going to open October 4th, we're 104. Again, that came up because they're going to be, this group is a strong advocate for Medicaid expansion because it impacts mental health, as well as insurance for hospitals and everything else in all kinds of areas. So that came up, $720,000 being allotted, and they discussed the lottery machines and still collecting money from that. The other component of that was, I think one of the officers there said, "There's 96 jails in the state of Kansas?" I don't know if that's accurate.
Well, there's 105 counties, there could be some regional jails where a couple of counties share the same facility for cost reasons, but that sounds about right.
And the huge issue they're having with having staffing for correctional officers, as well as using telehealth now, even in their jails, because they can't have enough staff on any, on any level, because the increase is not just the criminal activity, but the mental illness component of it. We're fortunate to have two coresponders working with our police officers, that's not the case in so many places. So that staffing need is what I'm hearing quite a bit of. Do you see the same thing as far as correctional officers staffing within R C P D?
You know, we have some challenge in keeping correctional officers, it's nowhere near the same level as dispatch, which we're working very hard on right now. You know, I will speak broadly, and then I'll speak specifically. I read current topics, current news, all the time. I read three newspapers a day, sometimes four, depending on, you know, how much time I have. The labor pool in this country is a problem. It doesn't matter what industry you're in, whether it's law enforcement, corrections, or a fast-food business. There are more jobs posted right now than there are people looking for jobs. So that creates challenges for everyone and shortages. My limited knowledge about corrections across the state is they are very low-paid positions, poorly paid. And so it's a difficult job, and when you, the compensation is not as high as it could be doing something that's less arduous and not shift work and weekends and holidays, it's hard to attract people. I will tell you that I often get questions from my colleagues around the state who knew I was coming from a strict law enforcement background to the R C P D and a correctional facility, and they often have this smirk on their face and say, "So how's the jail going?" And I go, "You know, actually, it's going really well." And they look a little surprised, and I say, "What do you mean?" I said, "They are very well organized, they are professionally led, they have decent resources." You know, I've been, I've spent a lot of time down there watching them and seeing how they operate, and they are a very professional group. The interim jail administrator, Captain Woods, has been asked by the American Jail Association to serve on their leadership committee, and they are often contacted about protocols and procedures on how to operate a jail safely, and so that's a real compliment to him, but also to the jail division of the Police Department. So I think we're very fortunate here compared to what I hear from others around the state about how difficult it is to attract employees and keep them. The other thing to keep in mind, you talked about mental health before you asked that question, and I believe this to my core, without citing research or data, our jails and prisons are full of mentally ill people. And when our state fails to provide a robust mental health service on a variety of levels, whether it's local or at the state level, those folks often end up getting arrested and ended up, end up in jail. Now, we do a good job in Riley County because we have crisis coresponders, as you know, that are assigned to the Police Department but also work in the jail. We also have interns from K-State who are studying psychology, who intern in the jail. Those resources help us tremendously in avoiding taking people to jail. Having a local stabilization unit is going to be such a benefit for us that most communities in Kansas don't enjoy. There's often criticism nationally about the number of people who are incarcerated, and I understand why they think that the number's too high, but you don't often hear at the same time the acknowledgement about our lack of a good mental health system, not only in Kansas but in the country. And until that is addressed effectively, you're still going to see people who are mentally ill end up in jail who shouldn't be there because of the crimes they commit, because they haven't been receiving treatment and follow-up care that will keep them stabilized and from committing crime.
And that was part of our discussion this afternoon. So I was able to brag about that, not that it was great, but how as a Law Board and City Commission, we were able to allocate some funds for that, that's not going to be the case everywhere they go. The other piece that came up was they were going to train their correctional officers to be mental health facilitators, and that was frowned upon because the gentleman that was speaking was a sheriff, and he said, "You can't give them 80, 90 hours of training or 40 hours of training to expect them to be a correctionals officer as well as a mental health facilitator." And I think that's, that's a conversation that's going to be happening. But when you look at budget cuts or Medicaid expansion or whatever it is, you're putting more and more on these individuals that are getting paid less and less for more arduous work.
Yeah, I could have a long discussion with you about the social ills of society that end up in the bailiwick of the Police Department that shouldn't be there, in my opinion, but instead of ignoring it, we have adjusted for years on the types of training we provide and the services we provide to deal with those shortfalls in other areas. I hope, at least as long as I'm here, and I'll work my darndest to make sure we never lose those crisis coresponders. I can't predict to you how many more people would end up in jail or end up having force used against them, but because we have those crisis coresponders, it heads off so many conflicts that we otherwise would be involved in because the officers are trained to recognize signs of mental illness. I thought this is what you were going to say about corrections. Our correctional officers receive one-day training in mental health first aid. That teaches them to recognize signs of mental illness. That teaches them to recognize signs of mental illness, not to diagnose it or to treat it. But enough to know, "I need to get the crisis co-responder to come see this in me because of the signs that I'm seeing here." And that's a huge benefit.
Yeah, I could talk for hours as well, because they were also thinking about having them screen them. And we won't even get into that, so I'll just leave it.
At, at first glance, I would not be in favor of that either.
I think that's where they were going. So, well, thank you again.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Forgive my ignorance on this subject because I know I've asked this before and the question's been answered. But can you remind me, you mentioned body cams. Do all of the RCPD police officers wear body cams?
The ones that are assigned to patrol are required to wear body cameras while they're out on patrol. Detectives don't wear body cameras, I don't wear a body camera. So, typically, it's your frontline officer that's responding to calls for service that do.
Understood. And my question associated to that is, just in light of, um, some things that have happened in other cities, do we have an internal policy on what would happen if there was an incident? Or if, for whatever reason, an officer had shut off their body camera? Do we have any internal policies currently that address that?
We do, and typically, it's not a matter of them shutting it off, it's a matter of them forgetting to turn it on. And there are policy implications that can result in discipline. And I have imposed discipline in a case where an officer forgot to turn on his body camera because then it created an issue where it was harder to determine what happened during an incident. So, um, that is something that is in policy. Uh, they are required in certain situations to have it on. I'll give you an example where they're not required to have it on. If they are having a normal interaction with an elected official, uh, they are not supposed to have their body camera on, just in a normal conversation. If they come into my office to have a conversation with me, they're not supposed to have their body camera on. If they go into a restroom, or for the most part in a medical facility when someone's being treated and the issue is more privacy of other people who could be captured. But there are some specific situations, like in a medical situation, where they can turn it on. And that, of course, being cognizant of the other people in the area is important. So, it is a comprehensive policy that is designed to balance privacy with collecting evidence and also having a documented record of an enforcement action or a use of force so that can aid us in determining if they were within policy during that, that action.
I think in, um, and you probably know some of the cases that I'm referring to, but it seems as though there have been a couple of places where the body cam accidentally wasn't turned on or was turned off and then an incident happened. And then essentially, the city or the county had to respond and say, "That was off." And it just brings down the level of community trust. And it seems in both of the cases with cities that I've, um, been watching, they stumbled and how they were going to, maybe not even necessarily discipline the officer, but what the repercussions of that were. Um, and so, I just wanted to make sure that we had thought about that. I, I figured that we probably did already have a policy in place, but nonetheless, I wanted to ask.
If I can, if you'll indulge me for a second, just to elaborate, you know, I, I know with some of the perceptions that people have about this technology and when it's not used properly, I can tell you in the early days of body cameras, the technology was not as reliable as we would like. And it always frustrated me when the audio wasn't working or the footage was not working. It did, the camera didn't come on because the automatic assumption by many is, "Well, the police were trying to cover something up that didn't go well." And I hate that perception, and I work so hard to make sure that we don't have that happen. I can tell you, our current generation of body cameras, um, do not have this feature because they're older, but it's what we will be pursuing when we go to the next generation. We had this in my, my past department. And that is when an officer's in a cruiser, for example, when they turn on their red lights and siren, or their red lights, uh, to stop a car or to respond on a call, that action alone turns on both the in-car camera and the body camera. So, the officer doesn't have to remember. It's hard for people to understand the stress that an officer goes through in a situation that they're about to go into that could be dangerous. Sometimes, if they have to do it manually, they forget. And the situation I described a few minutes ago is exactly what happened. It was a pursuit and an officer forgot to turn his camera on until well into it. So, they have systems now, several companies offer it. As soon as you activate that emergency equipment, not only does the in-car camera come on automatically, but also the body camera, if it's from the same vendor. So, our next generation is going to have that on the body cameras.
Thank you. Um, next question I had, this could just be my perception, but it feels like in the last couple of weeks, there have been, or last few weeks, kind of maybe an uptick in DUI checkpoints, which I'm a hundred percent fine with. That's one thing that I have very little patience for in 2019. Um, so, I was just wondering, should we have an expectation, at least maybe through this busy football season, that you're, you're going to be doing more of those?
My understanding from what the department, um, not policy, but the goals have been is to have at least one DUI stationary checkpoint a year, and that's what we had recently. As far as DUI saturation patrols, those are more frequent and they do vary. But the public needs to know two things, and I think you probably may already know this. Anytime we concentrate an enforcement effort, and this one was done in conjunction with a statewide enforcement effort, we want to participate in those. My understanding in the past, before my arrival, we had fallen out of participating in statewide campaigns. I think it's important for us to participate in those. So, that was a statewide enforcement campaign. And the stationary ones, we have a goal of doing one per year. The saturation, we may do those more often depending on a couple of things. And one of them is the frequency of accidents in certain locations. That location is our highest accident location in the city. So, we justify doing things like that because we have accidents here and we have injuries here. So, we are going to do this, uh, checkpoint in this location because we have the data to show this is a problem. Uh, so, in terms of just picking a location randomly to go out there, uh, we want to use data to justify setting something up or doing something in a certain area. And the second thing is our social media. We don't do these unless we put it out there. We tell people. We tell people, "We're going to be out there, and this is what we're going to be enforcing, and this is generally the area we're going to be doing it." So, we're not hiding behind bushes, we're not trying to trick anybody, we're trying to be, uh, transparent because we want the roads to be safe. It's just that simple. We want the roads to be safer, and if that requires telling people in advance, "We're going to be out there," make a different choice, we hope they make that choice. That night, five people didn't make a good choice. And so, we did make five arrests for DUI that evening. They were surprised, they thought it would be a higher number based on previous experience. And the highway patrol was also part of that enforcement effort. Uh, I look at it, uh, a different way. Maybe people are making better choices, and that's why we only made five arrests. That's what I hope.
Ride-sharing services, I don't really understand why you would be in a situation where you would need to do that, but I appreciate that work. Um, and then just the last thing, not a question, I just wanted to say, um, because I didn't, I can't remember if I said it last time you were here, but I did. Uh, I just want to thank you in a more public way for the appointment of the LGBT liaisons, um, at the police department. I got a lot of feedback after you announced that on, um, social media, a lot of positive feedback. I, I mean, I have witnessed it, uh, where, I actually witnessed it a few years ago where, um, someone had something happen to them that very well could have been reported or called the cops as like an assault, but they didn't want to do it because they figured they were, they were part of the gay community, the police wouldn't care, or at least brush it off, so what's the point? And just doing things like that, even if it's not their full-time job, does a lot to build trust in that community. Um, so, I just wanted to thank you in a public way for doing that. Um, and I hope you received the same amount of positive feedback I did, but a lot of people reached out to me and was like, "Wow, this is a really, really big deal." So, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Uh, it goes hand in hand with my comments publicly about, uh, people who are reluctant to report crime because they don't want their names in the paper. Uh, and I have received nothing but positive feedback about my efforts to prevent that. As, as you know, when you read the paper, that names still get reported because they're following a process that I have to adhere to in terms of open records requests. Uh, but I've also had people come up to me and tell me, "I was victimized this way, but I'm not reporting it because I know my name could still end up in the paper, it's still a concern of mine." So, anytime there's a barrier to reporting, anytime there's a barrier to somebody feeling like they want help but can't get it for whatever reason, or they don't trust us, if I can do something to break down that barrier to serve everyone who lives or works in this community, then I'm committed to doing that. I did that in this case because I want to take, I want to remove those barriers. Whether they're real or not, the fact that people feel that way matters to me. And so, it goes hand in hand with the whole victim name reporting issue.
And I'm actually really glad that you just brought that up because, also, thank you for that. Because, um, also, about a year ago, I witnessed next door to me a domestic violence situation, and I called it in. Um, and they warned me that this person would know, potentially, if they looked up, that I was the one that was, that was called, uh, that called. And I was, to me, I just needed to do it, but I hesitated for a second because I was like, "I'm going to, this person's going to come back and I'm getting, going to get into altercation with them. They're my next-door neighbor, you know, a hundred percent know who I am." And it made me hesitate. So, I think that you're a hundred percent right, that people, I could totally understand that if I didn't have a roommate or something of that nature, I might have backed out of ever saying anything, and what a loss that would have been. Uh, so, I, I also applaud you. I know you got a little bit of flack for that as well, so I applaud you for making that decision as well. I think it was the correct one. Whatever we can do to facilitate those communications and make people trust those communications more is always a positive and good thing. So, thank you for that as well.
You and I agree on that, yes, sir.
All right, well, thanks very much, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Okay. The second item is the Unified Development Ordinance update. And we have Jim, Ted Bungar is joining us.
Good evening. Let me reset things, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chad Bungar with the City Planning Department, Community Development Department. Providing an update, uh, on the Unified Development Ordinance. We have probably fallen off the radar a little bit in terms of, uh, public awareness of this. Doesn't mean we haven't, um, our staff and folks in city hall haven't been working on this diligently. Uh, the Community Development Department's been meeting twice a week for two hours every week to edit through this. If you remember, we, um, uh, broke this up into multiple modules, which took several sections at a time. And, uh, and then this spring, we were given everything all at once in one document. And, uh, we spent considerable amount of time going through it, trying to tie all the knots together, or the strings together to form knots to connect it all. When you do that, then you uncover a string that isn't connected and you pull on it and things unravel. So, it took quite a bit of knitting this sweater together. But I'm real confident we are creating a set of development regulations that'll serve this community well to create, um, a community that we can be proud of. This didn't show up real well, so I apologize. I am turning back over our full edits, uh, complete edits to the consultant tomorrow. Uh, we have one last visit with the Public Works Department to make sure a couple of things are squared up in the subdivision standards. Uh, and then our consultant, I'm anticipating, takes a month or two to give us back a full, uh, finalized public document. If you recall, we're using a product called Incode Plus, which will be an online document center where this will primarily live, although we will create hard copies. But the plan is we will have a, uh, full final version that we will take on the roadshow. Really, we could cram this all in and, and hammer it and try to get it done by the end of the year. But I am of the opinion, and our staff is under the opinion, that doing that would be, um, pushing a lot of information at folks, and it's already complicated enough, just the whole idea of zoning and subdivision regulations, that, uh, we would struggle and probably have it blow up in our face. So, we have proposed this timeline, uh, to, to, to the city manager's office. Uh, we will take a variety of topics to the planning board where we need a little feedback or, or fill in some gaps. We'll also kick off a public outreach, uh, effort. I shuffled the deck, I apologize. Uh, as I sat there this evening, I realized this is probably a better opening slide. So, we'll spend, uh, several months, uh, reaching out to the community, to stakeholders, uh, to let them know about this, uh, set of regulations, get feedback, and really hit it hard. The last thing I want anybody to show up the day we adopt this or work towards adoption is that they didn't know about it and had questions. So, we will, we'll be, probably some will say obnoxious about getting this information out, but we'll work really hard. Then, uh, starting in February, uh, you started this project. Unfortunately, some of you probably will not be able to finish this project with us. We will go article by article with the planning board, the ordinance advisory committee, and the city commission, um, to review article by article. Uh, the hope there isn't a lot of wordsmithing or picking through line by line kind of things, but really getting a full grasp of what is in this, uh, development ordinance, which, if you remember, we're taking, we're updating our zoning and our subdivision regulations, making it modern, making it prepared for, for the future, and putting them together, uh, in the one document. With the hopes that in May, June, and July, we'll be on the road to adoption and get this done. Because I'm tired of it, my staff's tired of it, uh, city hall's tired of it. Uh, but we want it done right, we want it done well, and that's why we're, we've taken our time on it. Uh, a little bit about the outreach, we will do blog posts, social media messages. I'm even envisioning a lot of videos, kind of like the Monday in Manhattan, uh, Facebook Live posts, those sort of things. As well as a number of community meetings. I'm envisioning, if you have a book club and you want to hear about this thing, by golly, we'll be there to talk about it. As well as plenty of stakeholders with developers, uh, consultants, designers, neighborhoods, business community, everybody that we can get in front of to talk about this, we really plan on doing that. I've not intended to go through each of these changes, but kind of run through them briefly. Uh, there's a lot, uh, so, changes and then new items. We are really overhauling our zoning district, uh, districts. Um, I think we have something like eight or nine residential districts, not counting overlays. Uh, we're shaking them down into, I believe, five. I'll have to count that when we get to that slide, but we're shrinking them down considerably. Uh, new naming conventions, uh, we also have a new development type, which I'll go through here quick. So, this is the, the residential. So, as I said, we have five, uh, new named residential. And you can see here is the new name and its designation, and then over to the right is our existing. So, we're taking three single-family residential districts that only allow for single-family homes. The only difference really is the size of lot that can occur on them. And then for, um, the suburban residential is how big of a setback. We're smushing them down into one zoning district. Uh, again, the only difference here is a sixty-five-hundred-square-foot lot versus a ten-thousand-square-foot lot versus, uh, two thou, two hun, a twenty-thousand-square-foot lot. Nothing really changes, so we're simplifying that. We have, uh, on our attached districts, so allowing for two-family primarily. Four-family combines is really just the medium density that we have, as well as allows for, uh, the village use, which I'll explain to you here in a moment. And then really just renaming these last two high-density districts. Nothing but, uh, significantly changes in the commercial realm. Uh, still have the, generally, the same number of districts, just reorganizing and renaming. With the exception that we will allow, we are now going to have a by-right mixed-use district. So, if I wanted to have either vertically within one building or, or horizontally within a, an area, I could mix by-right with, with set of standards and regulations, put apartments with a commercial center. Uh, you know, within the same building, I could have apartments and, uh, retail space and office space, or I could spread that over an area, which is something we have really needed for, for many, many years. So, we're bringing that forward. An industrial, not a bunch changes there. That seems to be a typo, I apologize, but really not, not a significant change in terms of, uh, industrial or special-use districts. With the exception of, we are creating a, um, a public zoning district. So, if the city or the school district... So if the city or the school district would like to rezone city hall or a school site or a park to um a public institutional district, they could. Which would free up or allow a little bit more flexibility than if city hall today is zone C1. Uh uh restricted business district in the front half and residential uh in the back half, which is complicated to begin with and, and they also have varying limitations on size and uses and those sort of things. And so we could alleviate some of those hassles with this zoning district.
Chad?
Yes.
Yeah, it's me. Um I did have a question about that. I am concerned about the floodplain part of that. Um should that not be separate? Because that is...
You're right.
That requires more conversations for any establishments there.
We are gonna break that out. This was an old, pulled from an old presentation that I had with the commission, or excuse me, the planning board about a month ago. We have pulled that out, separated it, so I apologize for that. We'll have our public institutional district. Uh and then the floodplain stuff will be a separate district, an overlay district like it is today. Nothing really is changing with our floodplain regulations.
Right, but it just should be a different...
It'll be a different line, yep.
Completely, I think.
Yep, definitely.
And that'll continue to be under special districts, but it'll just be a new category.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I support that.
And we'll still have uh what we know today as a planned unit development. We'll still have that, but it'll be called a PUD floating zone. So nothing changes there. The idea through this whole thing is to create a set of regulations that really um allows for the, the modernization, the flexibility and the freedom to the extent allowed, so we don't have to do a bunch of PUDs. Cause in my estimation, we do a lot of planned unit developments because our regulations are so out of touch today with the development trends, or we try to hammer a square peg in a round hole and are forced to use a PUD. And so we've worked real hard to try to correct a lot of those issues where a PUD will be used for truly what it's intended to be. And that is unique uses, unique development types that we've never seen before. And so we've tried to incorporate a lot of those things that we see regularly that become a PUD just cause into our, our buy-right um zoning districts to make life a whole lot easier and efficient and effective and cheaper for development. Um our overlays don't change a whole lot. Just naming conventions um change. Something broke on this slide. I apologize. I can correct this if you'd like. A lot of these um we have former zone, so we do have an air, an airport overlay district. Something really broke bad here. Um established neighborhood overlay is what our traditional neighborhood overlay district is today. Um so in the older areas of town. The redevelopment design is what our M-FRO is today. Um on the east side of campus. Eureka Valley and the gateway corridors are new for us and the business park is uh, and the over, university fringe is uh uh present today. So I apologize for this slide having a few errors in that.
What are the errors?
Uh that we have former zoning districts, so that non-applicable stuff here should be, these first two.
I wanted to ask about more of the gate, gateway corridors.
Mm-hmm.
Um obviously, there are more entrances to this community than just K-18 and Eureka Valley. So the others would be twenty-four from the east.
Yep.
Twenty-four from the north and one-seventy-seven from the south for sure. So that, those are covered by this one entry that says gateway corridor overlay.
Um no, the, these two overlays have been, we've been sitting on those for a number of years. And they are specific to K-18, Eureka Valley, as well as one-seventy-seven. Uh they are commercial overlay districts, so they recognize that coming off of I-70 down the hill has unique uh commercial opportunities with now that we have infrastructure going out that way. But um has particular reasons to be preserved, that the view should be preserved. That it, it has some design standards with it, sightings issues with that. Uh similar on the Eureka Valley is that is a major commercial corridor that should be treated with um some different or special design standards and site standards. And so both of those are, are incorporate those uh sighting and design standards for those commercial corridors. Whereas uh Highway twenty-four, we haven't recognized that in the comp plan, uh nor north out of town. Uh just haven't been a focus. These were both called out in comp plans many years past.
So once... So once this is adopted.
Mm-hmm.
It would be incorporated into the, the comp plan and this, the gateway corridor plan and some of these others, right? But, okay, cause I, I was on the gateway corridor plan and I thought it included more than just the two entrances.
Nope. Unless I'm not thinking right, Eric. Those are the two, two focal areas, correct?
Um that's correct. And the gateway plan is specifically one-seventy-seven coming in from the interstate.
Yeah.
And the Eureka Valley is specifically K-18. And both of those studies were done in concert with Riley County and they're very specific to those two corridors. And they're designed so that the county will adopt a similar overlay as the city. So and, and the idea was that initially the county would apply that overlay, cause the land, most of the land isn't annexed. That overlay would be applied in the county and kinda set the framework. So when land gets annexed into the city, that overlay already exists. And we have the same overlay in the city and the county and the underlying base zoning would change from county zoning to city zoning. As per the Manhattan urban...
As annexations take place, yeah.
Following the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. And has the county done that?
They're in, they're in the process of doing a UDO version of their regs and they're incorporating those overlays into theirs.
Okay.
Um one comment on the US-24. We do have the US-24 Corridor Management Plan that was done. There was a KDOT project that went from Manhattan all the way to Wamego. And it's actually been done twice. The most recent one is two thousand nine, I think. And it has been adopted by the city as part of the urban area plan.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you...
Yep.
Uh commenting on that.
Yeah, happy to. Uh the other thing that's new for us here is residential development types. Um so I believe um the tables, the, the land use tables are provided in your packet. And if you look through it uh under each district, uh it's uh SC or MP, which stands for standard clustered um or master plan. Standard is a standard zoning district. It has um a set of uh this primarily revolves all around lot size and setbacks. Uh has its minimum lot size requirements. The idea is you move from left to right, from standard to clustered to master plan. You get um, you can have more density and more flexibility in the land uses that you provide. So, or wanna provide. So the standard would be kinda like what we see um down here around city hall. Clustered, the idea would be you are given greater density if you preserve more open space and natural areas. So uh although Miller Ranch uh here was not developed in that concept, generally speaking, you can see it has uh some, has preserved ravines and wooded areas and uh has trail networks and some uh private parkland area associated with its development. The clustering would allow them to have smaller lots or more density if they're willing to set those lands aside in uh conservation easements or other kind of easements that the HOA would manage or they would give uh to the city as parkland if we want it or a conservation agency like the Audubon Society or the Nature Conservancy or something along those lines. Um so there's a trade-off of preserving more natural things that make our community um, you know, greener and, and healthier and more resilient. And the developer can uh have better use or, or higher density slightly for their land. And then the master plan, uh I think a really good example that could have used the master plan process if it was available was Stonehenge, uh where it's mixing a variety of uh commercial and residential land uses. So the idea behind the master plan would be the developer would provide us with documentation, maps like this, their proposed land uses, the style of development that they would like to see. And that would be given to the planning board, the community, the planning board and the city commission as a package. And we would adopt that master plan through the zoning and subdivision process. So it's not as strict or precise as a planned unit development or what we're gonna be calling the PUD floating zone. Uh but it gives that flexibility to the developer and the community to see a mix of uses um and be a little bit more efficient in that process to get it done. Uh with all those controls, uh generally speaking, to, to allow the neighborhood to understand what's going where and what it's gonna look like. So it'll be a new thing for us that, that we're excited to try out and be more effective for the community. Uh other changes, kinda running through this list. Um we're gonna update existing regulations to better align with current development patterns. Um this is everything from creating, uh let me back that up. Creating side yard setbacks, or excuse me, creating what we're gonna call side street setbacks. So today, that's the biggest one, uh or the most glaring. Today, if you live on a corner lot, you have a twenty-five-foot front yard setback where your front door is and a twenty-five-foot setback off your side, sidewall. And if you wanna fence to fence in your pets or your kids or whatever, you have to set that fence back twenty-five feet. And it chews up a lot of your, of your property. We've created a, or the consultant has created a mechanism called a side street. So you still have a, a front yard setback that is twenty, twenty-five feet back. But that side street is a little shorter, a little narrower, so people can enjoy their property more in fences and those kinda things. That's probably overwhelmingly one of the things we see at the border zoning appeals. Our side, are those front yard setbacks for fences or small, small minor building additions. So that'll alleviate a lot of those things. We're creating the ability to have uh cottage villages or, or another way would be tiny homes. We had to do some fancy footwork when it came to allowing um a village setting for smaller homes that were bigger than four-hundred square feet and working within the building codes. We had to do some fancy naming and footwork. But essentially, someone could, could create uh a village of small homes that, that are popular now or, or nitty. Um we have a set of regulations to allow that. It would generally be like a manufactured home park, but for these site-built, tiny home kinda sort of things. Um and then we have developed um some minimum design standards for multifamily as well as commercial um properties across the city. And we haven't really had that um in most everywhere in the city, so that'll be something new for us. Uh we're providing a few additional design standards. We s- we have done two iterations of standards for Aggieville and this would be the last. They're really more uh building design specific um to make sure we get the, the building pattern that we want in our community. We've updated our subdivision regulations. Uh one of the bigger, some of the bigger ones are access management right-of-way standards that more align with our uh transportation strategies. Uh there were a few areas that broke or busted once we adopted that new set of uh transportation standards in two thousand fifteen. We are gonna, we are proposing sidewalks on both sides of all streets. Right now, only commercial uh collectors and arterials are required to have sidewalks on both sides. But um we feel that it's important that even local residential streets uh get that same treatment for safe, pedestrian safety, for walkability, health. Um I think even it is an economic um element for our community. And so we're proposing that. We've updated our stormwater management requirements uh to some extent. There's still a lot of work to do within Public Works. Uh but we've updated a little bit um in the subdivision regulations. Let's see, uh we are, we've tweaked our, well, not more than, we've done more than tweaked. We've, we've revamped our parking standards to try to find that right fit. Um so we've put a cap on some parking requirements. Um some obvious ones are like Walgreens or Walmart, Home Depot, where there's just a sea of asphalt uh built for, you know, the, those days, those Black Friday kinda sort of events, which we all know probably aren't uh even used then. And so we've put a cap on the maximum number of parking spaces you can have. So we don't have a lot of asphalt for runoff and those kinda things. Um as well as lowered our minimums. Uh you can go around probably every use and see, maybe with the exception of a few dentists and doctors, and see a lot of open spaces, or a lot of open parking spaces most hours of the day. And so we've tried to lower that to a more realistic standard. So businesses aren't spending money on asphalt for something that they will never use and spend it for, on their building or on their employees or whatever. Uh we are creating new landscaping and screening requirements today that's pretty minimal. And so the landscaping side of things really um right-fitting to what's being developed today with foundation plannings, parking lot uh plannings and screening. We're not trying to create uh an island oasis of sorts with new lush super vegetation everywhere, but really just trying to reflect what is being constructed today um so that it is a, a standard across the board. Uh outdoor lighting requirements is a new thing for us. And then uh updating our applications to reflect all this. And I think this may be the last slide, is updating our non-conforming use regulations, which as you know, is, is a consistent, consistent challenge. And you saw that a few months ago, maybe a little longer, but we have a new strategy to address those non-conforming uses. So that's all I have. There's a lot there. Um we're excited to get this final draft back to us um so that we can get it out to the community and, and start working through this back again. Um and get towards our adoption of this project. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Talk to me about the non-conforming portion of that.
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean? It's very loaded?
So uh we, we brought a proposal to you a few months ago. Um that whole topic is loaded. Uh and it's a challenging topic for us, always has been because of uh how, how are, primarily our residential uses have, our residential zoning districts and areas in town have gone up and down in terms of upzoning and downzoning. Generally speaking, we will go through a registration process where if you are, if you have a um, a use that does, is non-conforming to the zoning district that it's in, uh the owner will provide us uh documentation to say uh it is non-conforming through this registration process. If it meets those standards, and there are quite a few of those out there that will, they'll get a document, documents as they're registered and they can continue along with that use, uh generally speaking. If they can't, then it will be, it's our intention that we'll go and enforce those things. I don't think it's right for the neighborhood, uh for the other developers that have legal uses, legal non-conforming uses, to allow those things to exist. So if they do not register, um then um, you know, then we have some enforcement work to do. Registering it being to be verified that they're a legal non-conforming use uh allows for um we're, we're providing more, a higher degree of uh update and improvements than what we normally do now. Today, it's locked in and you can't um change or alter your dis, your, your dwelling if it's a, you know, apartment building or whatever. Um it's locked into what you have and there's not a whole lot of flexibility. This would allow, the registration will allow a little bit more flexibility for upkeep, for maintenance, uh health and safety improvements without having to go through a whole rigmarole of conditional uses with the planning or the border zoning appeals, those sort of things. So we're trying to, reward's not the best way to put it, but recognize those that are truly legally non-conforming and, and can be there. They're vested. They can maintain it and, and have good properties. And then if we can't verify that, then in my opinion, we should go and address those things however we have to. Uh cause generally speaking, they're illegal units and they've been illegal maybe for some time. So we'll address those. So I don't know if that was clear enough for you.
They have to show, show documentation?
Yeah.
And then they would have to come and prove it. Otherwise, you go in and check it and see where it's at and make, simplify that process, sort of speak.
Exactly.
And if not, then they have to come to conforming.
Yep.
Conforming. Conforming terms.
Yep, that's a great way to put it.
And I'm sure there's going to be lots of discussion over that. But moving on, the next question is, um, you said something about Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mm-hmm.
And that's still in here. So some, I somehow thought that that would be removed.
We'll always have to have Board of Zoning Appeals. There'll always be some weird property that needs a variance. There's also, we, we haven't done away with our conditional use process. There are some areas that, uh, you know, for example, maybe a drive, what, drive-through restaurant could be okay there, but as a community, we want to double-check it, uh, and that's the function of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So yeah, we weren't proposing to get rid of them. We've worked real hard to try to reduce some of those repeat customer sort of kind of things, right? The fences in the front yard setback on a corner lot. You know, a sixteen inch, uh, reduction of the front yard setback because of a garage that need to be there, those kinds of things. That we've tried to address those. So there's far less applications to the Board of Zoning Appeals for mundane, simple stuff that we should, our regulations should have been changed years ago to address those sort of things.
That was always a way out, out of any decisions we've made. So I always felt like that was something that, um, they didn't feel some developers or homeowners or whomever it might be, didn't feel the need to come to us because they, they knew the Board of Zoning Appeals would approve it. But the other factor to that is they do come to city staff first, right? And there may have been some that you have denied that probably didn't make it to the Board of Zoning Appeals for approval. Or do they just automatically go there?
No, we see quite a few folks come through the door and say, I, I can't even think of a wild example, but you know, I want to do something super out of line with the neighborhood, uh, and get a variance or an exception. And we'll say, hmm, that's probably a bad idea. We won't support that. They always have that right to make the application. So even when we say, hmm, we won't support that, that's not, you know, you clearly don't meet the standards for the application. They could still apply and then we're just forced to put that in writing and recommend denial to the board. And then it's the board's decision. So we see quite a few folks, I mean, on a monthly basis, come and propose something where we say it probably is not going to work.
So let me ask you this, for the ones that staff has denied and they still went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, how many of those did the Board of Zoning Appeals approve?
That's a tough one. I would say it, it's a small number. And we try to weed out the really not appropriate applications, um, before they get there, suggest that you, you're not going to get staff support. And so that's why you see a kind of a high number of, of, uh, you know, applications approved because for every one, we've probably told three people, don't waste your time kind of sort of thing. But the ones that, from that that do, you know, are, are determined to do that, I, it would be a small handful that say, well, I don't care if I have staffs.
Yeah, that if the Board of Zoning Appeals approves it, even though it's against, uh, staff recommendation, I, I worry about that. Because that changes it and some people may feel they have a certain type of leverage or forget about what the city does. The Board of Zoning Appeals will approve it. So I just want us to look at that as we get closer. Uh, when it says the zoning administrator, is that our staff? Who is a zoning administrator?
Yeah, so that is, uh, technically I think it's Ron who passes it on to Eric, who passes it on to Barry Beagle, who is our senior, uh, senior planner for current planning is who that zoning administrator is. And then Divvy's that task up amongst staff.
And there was some discussion about annexation. So we, as we look at, they're doing that study for Blue Township, I'm trying to find my page here. Blue Township, I know we're talking about a different type of annexation in this component, but is that something that they're going to be privy to when they do that study? Cause one of that part of it is also the cost analysis for any kind of annexations we make. So this study, I just want to know if that, if the consultants have, are going to be provided this type of information when we talk about annexation or what the UDO is discussing.
So yes, we will provide our, our consultants for that study with our zoning reg, or our UDO. So they can just see, compare apples to apples or apples to oranges to future apples, however you want to put it. I think there are some standards in there of how we could unilaterally annex, but by and large, that's a state statute that we regurgitated into the UDO. And really everything in there about applications and any reference to annexation is, is almost solely related to a property owner or development wants to come into the city. So that's what that'll 99% of the time apply for.
And that's kind of what I, I was wondering, because I just want to make sure, because we have a study that we've approved, some of the, if anything here changes, that changes that as well. So.
Now, the only maybe thing would be, uh, you know, the sidewalk topic maybe, you know, today we only allow or require one sidewalk in residential local streets. And what does that change in the future for new developments out there versus what they have built already out there? But that, it's going to be very minor, uh, in terms of comparing those two things and doing that financial analysis.
Just let them know as we move forward.
We will definitely, yeah. They know that we're working on it.
This is a long process, but nevertheless, I, I feel like we've been working on it for years and we're going to work on it for a few more years. But still it's good to have everybody, uh, more educated, um, especially when they're already doing a study. I'll probably have more questions as we move along, but I will let others answer first.
Um, in the UDO, are our occupancy rules reestablished, our current ones?
Uh, not proposing to change it, um, but they are reestablished as for either a family by blood, marriage, lawful, you know, legal ways or for unrelated people.
Maybe, uh, maybe my memory is failing me because it's been a while since we discussed, but I just thought we were going to discuss that as a part of this process. That's one of the main topics as a part of this UDO that I have been waiting on is for us to rediscover that.
I don't know if, if I was given that directive that we needed to broach that, I didn't know that was a, I mean, we've had plenty of landlords and developers come in and say it's broken, but never given a great reason other than they have a five-bedroom house and they want to put five people in it. And then for every one of those, I got a neighborhood that says, we don't want that to happen. So.
On the reverse side of that, I've never been given a good reason on why we have that rule in the first place. So I just thought it would be, that tends, other than the, um, non-conforming, how we handle non-conforming, that seemed to me in tiny homes to be maybe one of the bigger topics of discussion, but it's been the one that I, I feel like we've semi-avoided. So you have at least one commissioner here that says that I would, I would like to have a discussion about that because I'm actually quite surprised ACLU hasn't come and challenged the state on it because they've done it in some, some of our surrounding states that have similar rules. Um, second part of this, Ron, you had mentioned in a briefing session that we may be discussing accessory dwelling units again. Is that going to be a topic that comes back up or is that put to bed for now?
We put that one to bed. Um, we still have those regulations and, and my staff is pretty excited about those regulations, but we carted it out early to some, uh, neighborhood groups and the planning board, and I think even the commission. And, uh, wasn't a, a welcome change. And so we laid it to bed, although we have a staff member, Ben Schmiehl, who's, uh, excited about the potential. Is it maybe one tool for the toolbox for affordable housing or appropriate housing? And so we're still working on it. Uh, we're still talking about it, but it won't be in this version of the, the development ordinance.
That would, it'll probably, if it comes up again, um, after I get off of the commission. Accessory dwelling units as a whole, even though I wasn't supported the first time it came, it is something that I think we should work towards and trying to find a good way to do. But in terms of affordable housing, if we're not willing to address occupancy rules, then I'm not sure that jumping to accessory dwelling units is the appropriate first step either. So, um, just curious on those two items. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I want to follow up on Commissioner McKee's comments there because I, I agree, the non-conforming thing is, is a big one with me. We gotta, we gotta solve that. And, and, uh, the second thing is, you know, the landlords talking about, you know, I have a house with five bedrooms. I should be able to rent it to five different people. I, I think we should discuss that, but, but for me, it, it's always been a case, we created this RL district, which combines the, you know, single residence, and we just have to forbid that in there. You know, because I think the rest of it may fit with the concept of, you know, higher density, but, but the single residential, I think that's where this whole thing came from. Where they didn't want, you know, you didn't want to have a single family home, have somebody rent it to five people living next to you. I mean, that's basically what the problem is. So if you, if you say no in that area, then you're good to go. And I see the same with the accessible, you know, the ADU units. That's the other problem. People in those R1 districts just are opposed to, you know, there being more than one family living there because the whole idea behind it was single family.
Yeah.
So, so I think, you know, if, if we want to have a discussion that way, okay, fine. And that may not solve the problem for some of the folks that bought, you know, R1 houses with five bedrooms. That isn't a solution for them, but, but, but I think that's the only way you can compromise on it. So, so I, I think that is important to discuss that at some point.
We'll have to look into it if that's the direction we need to, we, we need to look at. Uh, or if that is something we, you direct us to look at, we certainly can. I don't know how, to be truthful, I don't know if we can create two definitions that a family is this over here in an RL, you know, low density, and then over here it's something different. I don't know if that, that's probably going to get us sued quicker than, than if, uh, so I, I think we have to be consistent, whatever that is. If we can, we can discuss and, and conversate about, should be four, six, or three, or whatever the number, but I, I truly think we have to be consistent across the city that a family over here is the same as a family over here. You know, the, on that topic, how I believe it came about was, I don't know why four became the magic number, but it was generally that my family, be it four that I have, or if I have 18, my wife and 16 kiddos, there's some degree of non-drivers and, you know, those sort of things, which is still a lot of people in one house, but that's different than having six adults, six college students, six whatevers. And so I think that's where the debate of a nuclear family, if you will, you know, your traditional kind of assuming family versus however many adults you put into a unit. Again, we could discuss what, what the magic number is there if you want us to. It won't be an easy, easy discussion.
I agree. The only other point that I'll make to that, because that is the only argument that I've heard is parking. But all of us sit up here all the time and talk about how much we care about affordable housing. But when we make rules like that, we're essentially saying that parking is more important than putting someone in an affordable home.
Nope.
And to me, that's backwards. So it, I don't know what the outcome would be, but I think it's a worthwhile discussion to at least have. Is this rule that we've had on the books for some time an appropriate rule as cities around the country are making massive changes?
Yeah.
To how they do this. So.
Yep.
But, but just, just remember that property rights issue, when, when these folks build these single homes, they had an expectation of not having eight cars parked on the lawn next to them. And, and, and while I get the legal ramifications that, that, you know, you want to have one definition, if it can't be done because legally we can't, then, then fine, I'm for not changing it. But, but if it can be done, you know, that's the idea, having different districts, different rules. And I know some cities have lowered that to two, three, different ones. I think when Clemson was here, they had some really strange rules on, on, on putting college kids in one part of town and actually forbidding them from being in others, which I thought was, was amazing. And I don't want to see us go that way.
No.
But, uh, but I, I think we should examine it to see what, what makes sense. And if it doesn't make sense, then okay.
I'd like to see you kind of, um, scan the country and see what the, uh, standard is. And I think it's four, unrelated. Uh, but it, it's a matter of somebody, you know, trying to figure that out and that's in your world to find out.
Let me, let me just add one comment to that. It's kind of a moving target. Well, first of all, as Chad said, Lawrence got sued for creating two different definitions of family. So there's that issue that it needs to be consistent across the city. Having said that, I think there are some court cases coming out that because the nuclear family unit is so different now and there's multi-generational households and combined households and all kinds of different living situations now that the courts are starting to view family as something different.
Or the relate, the word related?
Well, and yeah, and so it's kind of a moving target. And it might be hard to, excuse me, put our finger on what, what is the magic number, but I, I just want you to be aware that it nationally, you were saying scope out what's going on. Well, it's changing nationally because the way people are living as a family unit is changing so much. So we'll, we'll try and address it as best we can.
Well, you know the, uh, the landscape better, but I have talked, well, as I talk to people in other cities, four is kind of the standard.
Yeah, and if you look at.
And that's all I'm trying to establish is we didn't create four unrelated people.
It's a pretty standard number across a lot of the country. There are some, as have, has been pointed out, that have actually decreased it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know, a family of two seems pretty tiny, but.
Yeah, okay.
If that's the directive, we're happy to.
I don't know. I'm just saying, you're in a position to make that up, make that, uh, scan.
Just a couple of things, Chad. One, when we talked about non-conforming and then registration, one of the things that brought this up in the first place some time ago was that the landlords or the owner of the home who was legally non-conforming was having difficulty with titles. In other words, when you, when it came time to sell, how do you establish that it continues to be legally non-conforming? Or how did all that work? So by registration, does that also infer that it is now codified as being, um, entitledable? Uh, if that's the right term, so that it could be passed with that same designation?
Generally speaking, yeah. I, I think the registration, if, if information, uh, was to come to light, like every other thing that we do, that someone falsified it or we found different information that someone brought along, that we could revoke that registration. But generally speaking, yes, they would have a piece of paper, um, that they could take to whoever they need to and say that I am, the city deems me legally non-conforming and that's good. Uh, and I have these rights to go with that. So yeah, that's, that's kind of the intent, is to provide that documentation to those property owners so they can do with it what they need to.
On sidewalks on both sides of the street, um, do we have any kind of idea what that would add to a developer or the city cost to do that?
So, uh, today and how we, uh, develop our streets and those sort of things, sidewalks are required to be installed with the house. So it's not part of the street improvement for most, uh, for all local streets. Collectors, arterials are a little bit different. But for local streets, uh, it, it comes in with the house. We've had some internal discussions, maybe we do that differently. Uh, but for now, it, it, the, the builder installs that sidewalk on that side of the street. So there's not a whole lot of, uh, ramifications in terms of benefit district costs or, or for the city. Except I will point out that we spend 50,000, up to $50,000 every year in sidewalk gap replacements, filling in those areas where, you know, if you look at Manhattan, you can almost, it's almost like a tree ring, or a tree and the growth ring of areas that were required two sidewalks, where we didn't, where we, on one side of the street. And so we spend about 50,000 every year filling in those gaps where they're important to the community. We also, um, passed with the, the street bond or the street tax. You know, we, we had Safe Route to School funding for filling in sidewalks and then the trails. So, you know, we spend money on filling in holes of where we don't have sidewalks. And so this is one part of, of making maybe that better and a more walkable community.
But it will be absorbed by a homeowner.
It will be. You're right.
So that means the price of the house goes up.
Yep.
And my, my particular community as well as Grand Mir, mine has one side of the street. I, I don't find it very persuasive that someone can't walk across the street to get on the sidewalk. But, um, Grand Mir has no sidewalks, maybe in the top portion they have a few, but.
Yep.
I just, I just worry that we're going to drive up, um, maybe unwittingly the cost for a homeowner. And the same thing goes with, if we're, if we get too creative on landscaping and screening, it's going to do the same thing. So I just urge you to be cautious about that.
Yeah.
The, the other thing is, uh, can you just kind of walk through, uh, maybe the, the combination of the overlay district and a residential district? In other words, if I'm in one of these overlay districts, established neighborhood, uh, which is OEN, and I'm on, let's just make a case here, on the west side of the park. park.
Mm-hmm.
So what does that mean if I'm a, in a single-family OEN?
You bet. Um, so the, the base zoning district, that, that RL, so single-family, in this case would generally establish the land use. Um, and I'd have to go back and look, and, you know, this is multi-pages, so I haven't memorized all these. How it today is, is land use and then, um, a lot area. And then the, the overlay district, that established neighborhood overlay, would come on top of it and establish different setback and lot coverage requirements than what the base district would. So in your example, West Park, West City Park, you can have a single-family home, um, and then that overlay district says your setbacks for the front yard would be at fourteen feet, not twenty-five feet, because they're smaller lots, and the development pattern was really at that ten to fourteen, or probably twelve to sixteen foot range. So we're trying to create a set of zoning regulations that mimic the development pattern in that area. The lot coverage would be, you know, thirty-five percent or thirty percent what it is today. You have a, a narrower side yard setback, uh, to accommodate those helms on those narrower, smaller lots. So that's what it is. Uh, the, the, there's also some very limited, um, design standards in that OEN district to goose people closer to creating homes that match the character of that area. Um, and so things like roof overhangs and porches and window coverage on the fronts, um, those sort of things are there to, to make sure that those homes, that new homes, not that we get a whole lot of new homes, um, better match the character than plopping in a, you know, something that's modern and no overhangs and, you know, I don't even know of a great example, but I think you get what I'm getting at, so. Other districts like the redevelopment design district also narrows up, uh, the setbacks, but, uh, increases the amount of density you can have there, and then has, lays down a whole host of design standards, and that's, if you look west, or excuse me, east of campus, that's the product. We haven't really changed a whole lot there, so, um, they shrink up setbacks and provided some more design standards with them. So hopefully that made sense to answer your question.
Yeah, I mean, if you look east of Aggieville or east of North Manhattan Avenue there, there's, uh, this might be called an area in transition, so, I mean, we want, we created high density just to the east of North Manhattan Avenue, and then there's certainly been infill in there where, um, maybe what the traditional single-family rental has turned into, by com- combining lots, has turned into a twelve-plex or.
Sure.
Or more, so, um, this maintenance of the character of neighborhood, I think, is important, and it's particularly difficult when we're transitioning a neighborhood.
Yeah.
To, because of what's needed for current or, or future. If I'm a developer and I want to build a, um, a new enclave, let's say, of just plain single-family homes.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, um, do I then attach a A to the, to the R? Is it R1A, or what, how does that work?
Um, so if, it'll take a little bit of getting used to, um, but if you want to create a subdivision of just single-family homes, like we have on the west side of town, uh, you will ask to have your property, property rezoned to RL, low-density residential. Then it'll be a decision of, do you want to just have the, the minimum lots meet the s-, um, the standard lot size requirements, which are seventy-five thou- or ten thousand square feet?
If I wanted twenty thousand?
You could still do a standard, and you can have maximums, or, you know, you can go on the higher side and larger lots, which a standard would be a good, would be, could be an appropriate use. But if you have a, a chunk of land that has some natural areas, some, you know, mature, um, special species that we, you know, the community would like to, or the developer would like to maintain, they have a pond that they'd like to utilize as a amenity, uh, some open space, then a cluster would be inappropriate, um, uh, development type. The difference there would be between the two is they could have smaller lots, meaning more dense and better use of that land. There are some development, uh, strategies, if you will, encouraged, so, um, having your lots closer together and on areas that aren't those protected areas, cul-de-sacs running along the nose of a ridgeline, those kind of things. Um, and then the rest would be in a separate tract to be preserved. So there's a way to do both, and it's just what the, the outcome of that developer is. If they have a flat piece of ground with nothing special on it, or they want to bulldoze everything level, then a standard would be it. But if they want to take advantage of some smaller lots to, um, and, and preserve some natural areas in that cluster development type may be more appropriate.
Want to go back to, uh, our discussion when we were working on the Miller property and.
Mm-hmm.
We had Neil Horton and Rich in here talking about it, and the part of this, part of the rub was that you could only do things in sequence. In other words, they couldn't, because of the nature of that development, they couldn't promise that only certain amount on that list that was authorized.
Right.
In the, um, whatever that was, C1, I guess.
Yeah.
Could not be, uh, could be restricted. In other words, anybody who wished to develop in that C1, who's on that list, could.
Yeah.
So part of the discussion when we got to the UDO was, well, how do we facilitate that, uh, so that the developer can choose what is in, in and along his development without going back to a PUD, which is what we had to do in that regard? So did, did we make progress? I mean, is it, can we tailor, um, kind of what is allowed in there according to the development?
Yeah. I think we have, we've created that flexibility within the master plan. Um, we need to chat through a little bit with, with Katie and her staff of just how much we can negotiate there, because it is, would be considered somewhat of a straight zoning application. But I think, or I know we have created the flexibility there that the developer can provide us with a master plan packet that says, I want to do, uh, these kind of uses within this zoning district in this area of this land, along with some building types and some information about that, and the layout of the land through a plat, and we can accomplish that.
Okay.
Yep.
The last thing, just, uh, because I asked the question earlier, and I, I think all the commissioners were provided with the initial answer, but I ask a follow-on question that not everybody might have been privy to. So the, the question had to do with the relationship with the urban planning board, uh, in this particular process.
Mm-hmm.
And as I understand it now, the urban planning board, uh, if they approve what you found at some point next year, and it comes to the city commission, and we don't like it, we still have those same choices that we do in normal things with a quasi-judicial action, which is, we can either ask them to take it back for certain reasons, or if we don't like it at all, that is, if there's something in the UDO that the commission doesn't like, in order to overrule what is in there, it will take four commissioners out of the five. Is that?
That is correct.
Essentially right?
Yep.
Just a caveat there is that if you send it back to them, then when it comes back, it only takes three.
Right.
Oh, good.
For the first time.
But, yep.
But part of this is the, the component of the planning board in Kansas statute, so the, part of their reason for existence is to review zoning and subdivision provisions. So that's really why, uh, they're certainly very involved in that process.
If you remember, we had a discussion, maybe, maybe it was a year ago or maybe two years ago, and, uh, and we said, well, there is an alternative, because we could also be the, the planning board, but the, the workload would go up.
I don't think you want anything to do with that, so.
Well, and part of, part of the reason that the timeframe has been extended is we want to make sure we do a good educational process so that we don't get to the thirteenth hour and the city commission is in disagreement with the planning board. We need to get some community consensus on things.
This is so complicated, and it's a change, so.
Right.
There's a lot of learning going on here.
Yeah.
Correct.
For the most part, I will say, we haven't done a whole lot of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We've updated where we needed to, uh, may, I, I know our staff has made thoughtful changes to reduce the number of border zoning appeals, to reduce the number of headaches, at the same time, uh, increase our standard of, you know, developing or creating a community, uh, all at the same time trying to be effective and efficient. So this, we're not proposing new rules that make this a year and a half, two-year process to get a subdivision. Those timelines really don't change a whole lot. We've just tried to right-fit a lot of our regulations to what we see being built today and what we think will be built in the future, so.
Oh, sorry.
What's that?
And to be more transparent.
And to be more transparent and easy, yep.
Uh, even though it looks simplified, there's still a lot of sub, subgroups in each of those categories, as, as you look through that. So, but as we streamline, mainstream, streamline it into a more simplified process, um, I think Mayor Dodson brings up a good point where we don't want to have additional cost burden
Right.
To families as we change some of those regulations at the same time. So I don't want to forget the reason for doing this. Uh, we want to stay in compliance, we want to think, uh, be forward-thinking, but we also don't want to increase those expenditures on homeowners.
Sure.
Tell me a little bit more about tiny villages, tiny houses and cottages, and the trend that's happening with those.
Right.
I mean, is that, because I see them here, where do you see them in Manhattan? I mean, what, what, is that like a mixed use, where do you see this happening?
Yeah, so we've had a couple of folks propose them. Um, I can't pinpoint of like, this is prime cottage village type land, right? Uh, we don't, we haven't done anything like that. Um, the best thing I could say they're similar to is like a manufactured home, park in nature, in that it'll have internal streets, it'll have homes on fairly small lots with small homes. That's the attractiveness of them, right? Is that you don't have to spend three hundred thousand dollars on a house, you can spend eighty thousand dollars on a house that fits you and your, your pet or whatever. Um, so I don't know if there's an ideal like land form for this, but it would, uh, if, when one gets built, it would look real similar in nature to like a manufactured home in terms of the streets, the, the, you know, how dense it is, uh, how, what spacing between each home and those kind of things.
How big a village are you, do you envision?
Uh, we've put some limits on that.
Yeah.
Um, but it, it's, you know.
So we'll have another conversation about it?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have anything right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I could dig it up if you'd like, I could go get my computer and pull it out, but.
I'd just like to read what you're planning.
Yeah, we'll definitely get that to you.
Okay.
Um, in the future, once we get this buttoned up, but that's.
Kind of like a mobile home area, or that, it's different than that?
Like I said, our, how, um, hmm, so the, the idea is that they would be site-built, stick-built homes. The building code does not re- recognize something to be brought in on a, on a, on a chassis with wheels. Um, that's been the problem is, either, for the building code, you either have, um, a stick-built, built towards codes, you have a manufactured home which builds our code someplace else and then drags it in on a, on a trailer, but then sets it down on a foundation. Or you have a HUD-approved manufactured home, which is the old mobile home kind of thing, but there's some standards there. Those are the really only three types of houses that are recognized in our building code. Um, I believe a lot of what you see on TV or hear about are most close, closely related to RVs, because they come in on a trailer and they got wheels, and those wheels don't come off. Um, uh, or they're built to no standard. They're a Connex box that have holes cut in them, which are probably real nice, and I've seen some amazing things, but they're not built toward any building code. Um, so we had to struggle with that. The, the, the International Building Code, chief can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, residential code has adopted an appendix to allow for different interior designs for homes that are four hundred square feet and smaller. So you can have a loft with some narrow headspace and a, and a ladder to get up to it, which you wouldn't be able to in any other home. Um, but we've also had people that have proposed something bigger than four hundred square feet, six hundred, eight hundred square feet. So we had to do a little shuffling and a little fancy footwork that a cottage is anything eight hundred square feet or less built in this village, mobile home kind of park setting, right? And then you could have a tiny home, which is four hundred square feet or smaller, to be able to apply for, uh, those allowances in the building code. So it's a little goofy, we'll work through it.
Right.
But it's what we have to do.
And my other question with tiny homes is banks. Um, banks that they typically don't provide loans or don't invest in those types of things. So if a developer comes and says this is what they want to do, uh, as we look into this a little deeper, my concern is we have such erratic weather in Manhattan, a- as well as throughout Kansas, about that, what does insurance do and what the, what do the banks do? I don't know if we have those conversations, because I would hate to set aside some land and a developer wants to build it, but we really can't do anything with it.
Right. I don't know about the banking.
I don't know if that's how it works.
Except for they will be stick-built to a building code. So the reality is there won't be a whole lot of difference between your and I's houses that are larger than eight hundred square feet versus that in the village, other than it probably won't be on its, the land that, oh, the tenant won't own the land that it sits on. I don't, I mean, that's a kind of a, a facet of, uh, mobile home, you know, manufactured home park, which will replicate in these things. So I don't know what the, uh, the lending institutions will do, that's for the developer to figure out, and we're just accommodating.
Okay.
That development type that seems to be a trend right now.
I look forward to more of the non-conforming issues as well.
Yeah, we'll hammer that hard.
Um, I, I do have some questions. Uh, with regard to the Ncode software that you're going to be using, is that, does that allow the public to see this, uh, everything? Okay.
So it will, um.
It's not going to be on the city's website, then it's going to be in this Ncode system?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, it is a, a software, a, a website that our consultant uses or built, and it is, um, they have an agreement through MuniCode, which our code of ordinance is, is done through. The UDO will actually live in our code of ordinance as Article twenty-six, or Chapter twenty-six.
Right.
Um, is, so it won't be a separate set of regulations, but when you go in, you'll click on the website, and up pops Ncode.
Okay.
And with it, you'll be able to word search, you'll have maps right there, so you don't have to bounce over to Riley County's GIS site or any of that stuff. It'll have tables and calculators, so. We haven't seen it fully yet, because we're still monkeying with the regulations, but once we get our public, um, draft, it'll all be there, is, the idea is you can click on a pro, on, on a, a map and up pops that you can do these uses on that parcel. Or you can go to this calculator, or this table, and say, I want to build a coffee shop, and it'll tell you the zoning districts that coffee shops are allowed, and then you can calculate, I want to build a two thousand square foot coffee shop, and it'll spit out how many parking spaces you can have, or how many, or the minimum parking spaces you require, the building setbacks, those kind of things. So it's pretty interactive, it will be fully publicly viewable.
Okay.
And everything I've seen, it's pretty easy to use, uh, once you figure out all the nuances of our new regulations.
With regard to sidewalks, I would like to see them on both sides. In my, uh, when my house was built, no sidewalks were required. So our neighborhood, whole neighborhood has no sidewalks, and it's only been what the city had, and the school district or whoever has put in, along Casement and along Knox Lane and Allen Road. So, uh, it's a pretty unequal system we have when, as you move from, uh, so if you're making a decision about a walkable community, uh, there were people taking their life in their hands on Knox Lane, going to the Northeast Park, until the city got the KDA grant to build that.
Yeah.
And that was just a shame when we were building huge, wonderful sidewalks to nowhere out on Kimball for a while. Uh, now that that's filled in, it's a different story, but.
Yeah.
There was nothing up there at Vanessa at the time. Um, and, um, I, I do have a concern about the junky look of, uh, when we build, um, units close together and the.
and the parking is not long enough for people to park two cars in the, in the driveway. Uh, and they block the sidewalk constantly. I mean, you're not going to probably be calling the police because your neighbor's blocking the sidewalk, but the, then, and people also start parking, um, uh, anywhere in the neighborhood that overflow is, uh, uh, it's just doesn't have a good feel of orderliness and, um, just an organized living kind of thing. So I'd like for us to be careful that we, what, what I see happening is people aren't using their garages to, for their car. They're using it for stuff and that means that our careful plan doesn't work.
Zoning can only do so much.
Well, I understand, but blocking the side, what, what's the higher priority too?
Sure.
For, uh, that, that one person or the common good? We have to have that discussion probably. Um, I am interested in design standards, like for the Aggieville area. I think we need to make Aggieville look, um, like it belongs together. And there are some, some, uh, sta- some themes there and there are themes downtown. In the newer areas, you know, West Loop or whatever, uh, it's whatever it is, but these two historic areas, I think we need to, um, try to, um, keep Aggieville with a brick look and downtown with a limestone look and, and not have blonde brick and white bricks and red bricks and orange bricks kind of thing. I, I just think that that cohesive look is a, a, um, desirable kind of thing.
We did not tackle downtown. We have created a set of design standards, um, for the buildings in Aggieville and then some others for apartment complexes and highway business districts and those kind of things. We wanted, we knew we were going to have a, uh, relook at the downtown master plan, if you will.
Okay.
Um, we want to do that as soon as we're done with this thing. And so, uh, we were waiting on creating those design standards when we tackled that project. So you won't see anything for downtown yet, but our plan is to get there as soon as we can.
I saw the term in here, twin homes, and I don't know what that is. I mean, i- is it a duplex?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be, it, it's, it is a duplex where you have the same looking home on one's, on either side of a property.
And they're just connected to each other or there's a break in the middle?
They'll be, they're, so a twin home will be, uh, has a property line down the center of that party wall. Today, we call that a single-family attached.
It has a property line down the middle.
Right.
As a duplex is all on one property.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. I just, uh, there were new terms in here that I, uh, tried to guess.
Yeah.
And, uh, okay, um, let's see. I ran across the term land banking and I thought that was banned.
Land banking?
It's on page nineteen. Um, I can, I'm not serious about it actually. Um.
Look that up.
It's okay. Um, but with regard to mixed use, could you, I mean, I think I know what mixed use is. So when we have a, um, a master plan, we, uh, include higher density like apartments. We include single-family. We in- include different, um, um, housing values and different sizes. Do you mean anything different than that when you say mixed use for this plan?
Yes, quite a bit actually. So mixed use can be, um, vertical within one building. So Aggieville and downtown have been doing mixed uses forever.
Right.
We just haven't adopted that effort at their parts of the city. So you can go vertical thinking, uh, retail on the first floor, commer- uh, office on the second and then everything else above it could be residential. Um, you could also have something horizontally through a lot or through a property. So think of, um, uh, Village Plaza west of, and, um, Setchild south of Anderson. I think that's a prime location to have a mixed-use development where you do the same type of thing but on that whole lot. So maybe over here is a commercial or is a retail building, um, with an office above it. And over here is that vertical integrated, you know, retail office residential. And in the middle of both those buildings is nothing but an apartment building. You can do that through the straight zoning, uh, mixed-use district where you can integrate all those uses either through one single building or across one property and mix matching with standards, with parking standards, with, uh, use compatibility standards, uh, those kind of things, all within one district.
The, the other thing to write, to remember though is this, you still have to follow the comprehensive plan.
Right.
You can't just propose a mixed-use project in, in a neighborhood that the comprehensive plan is saying is single-family.
Okay, good.
Now, Chad, you may explain the master plan a little bit.
Yep.
It allows a little bit of mixing of land uses, but it's limited.
Okay, so it's not just.
Yeah, the, the master plan.
At will, okay.
The master plan, you would have to designate that I want this area to be office uses and I want this area to be retail and over here apartments and then further over here, single-family homes. So there are clumps of uses.
Exactly.
Mixed within one whole development, but they are separate lots, separate areas separated by roads and parks and screening and those kind of things.
That's how we saw that project, Mike.
Yeah, and this is, yep. Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm, I, uh, am a bit concerned about mobile home parks. Uh, so would we be establishing new ones in our community with this?
Can today and we still will establish those.
Seen a new mobile home park here ever.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, all of the ones we have are, mm.
Decades old.
Blank years old.
Yeah.
And the ones that are out north were built and then included, I think, based on their need for water and sewer and that kind of. They aren't all ours either. Um, so the residents that I observe in mobile home courts, uh, we need to re- reinforce our efforts to, to make them a part of our community. Uh, we tend to talk to the management and expect them to communicate with their tenants or residents and they don't do it. And the, the, the residents are, are disadvantaged and are, are kept, um, uh, uh, out of the loop for communications, whether it was the flood notice or whether it is the survey the city does or. I, I, uh, want us to figure out how to better do that. And I'd be willing to consider some special, uh, cure for that problem. And I don't know what it is, but I bet other communities have solved it. And instead of just continuing to block them out of all of that communications, I want our, our, uh, they're entitled to that kind of, um, uh, in, in full engagement as a citizen. And as it is now, they don't even know what, what's being planned
Sure.
And what we're doing. So I'd like to make that point. And I don't want the tiny house or the villages to go down that path of not being fully enfranchised. Anyway, that's all. I don't, um, I, uh, uh, do support, I mean, I'm glad, I want this community education piece. I'm glad you're going to slow it down and make an effort to communicate. I've, we've been kind of concerned that we were gonna, as commissioners or as, that we were going to get this all in one notebook one of these days and have to, um, be, get through it and have some thoughts by two, you know, if we had two weeks, we'd probably be lucky, so.
Nope, my goal is that everyone will be as tired of this project as I will be.
Okay.
As I am by the end of this, so, yes.
And I do appreciate your developing the timeline. I think that that's important as we, and the fact that there are so few members of the public here, this is a big deal. It is a big deal. Uh, it's not, if, if, if you're a resident here, I don't think it's a big deal. If you're a developer here, it's a big deal. If you are a future resident. So some of this is part of the infrastructure that we deal with here in the community and try our best to make work. So anyway, I appreciate, thank you.
Well, I want to make one more comment on the sidewalks. Now you said that the sidewalks are built by whoever's building the house, right? So it's not part of the specials.
Correct. Today it is not, correct.
And that's something I think we should look at for the simple reason that, you know, you got these clusters here and what happens is a guy builds a house, you got a sidewalk in front of it and then there is no sidewalk on either end till somebody else builds.
Right.
It makes sense to me that when you put in the road, put in the sidewalk, then you got the whole thing done. If you're really talking about having a community that you can walk around, otherwise you're always going to have these gaps.
Sure.
And, and I do think we should have it at least on one side. I, I get the two sides, but as the mayor said, you know, it's going to run up the cost for one side of the street. And now some of my neighbors would say, you know, they're, they're happy I have to shovel the snow and they don't because there's only one on one side on Wind Song. So, so there's that issue also. You put more sidewalks out there, you got another problem of long-term maintenance and snow and things like that. So I, I'm all for one side, you know, I can go with two. But I do think we really need to take a real hard look at, if we're going to continue with specials, putting it on the specials and just putting the whole thing in at once.
And that is something we could do today. If, if you all five told Ron or Public Works Director to go do it, that's not going to be that, that, construction and payment of that is not envisioned to be folded into the UDO. That's just a policy or, or, or procedural issue. So, um, we could do that. And, and that's the discussion of why we've had that discussion is for that very point of you, you know, you build a house on one side of the street and the, the other, and then you got this long grass, you know, strip of nothing. So, yep, we agree and if you tell us to do it, by golly, we make that happen, so.
I like the idea of it being in the specials, but I also, I know we have to, yeah, but practically speaking, you have to wait until the home is built and all of the trucks are through, driving in the yard and breaking up the concrete on the sidewalk. So it almost could be that if we have a special that, um, maybe the city could contract to do some sidewalks through a subdivision at a certain point.
Sure.
And I mean, we do that with mowing. We contracted out with mowers and maybe that would be cheaper too. I don't, I don't, that, I'm just, that's a suggestion. I'm not.
Yeah.
Um, going to bat for it necessarily, but I do think that we ha- we have to find, uh, a way to do it and make it practical.
Yep, agreed. Yeah.
Let's, uh, go to public comment here for a minute and, uh, make sure if we have someone who's here that would like to make a comment on this issue, that this is the time. And love to hear from you if you've got thoughts about this at this early stage.
Which one do I speak into?
Either one, they're both.
I'll throw myself under the bus here. Uh, David Kreller, uh, would I give address if I remember?
Yes, sir.
It's been years since I've been before this group, uh, PO Box four seventeen here in Manhattan. Um, I would share two observations as we move through this process. And the message I would send tonight would be maybe two words or phrases, one of which would be, uh, avoiding being myopic. And secondly is grandfathering. Um, we have a community to the west of us that has a population of roughly twenty, twenty-two thousand and a daytime population well in excess of a hundred thousand with Fort Riley. We have a university that I'm not sure what their employment base is, but we have in excess of twenty thousand students. Uh, at the end of this street here, we have a building, our mall, which by my numbers, lost about five million dollars in value within the last year on an appraised basis. We're very subject, subject to a lot of different things in our community that could very adversely impact us very quickly. You don't have to go back very many years, remember BRAC and the possible impact that could have had to us. I lived through ninety, ninety-one during the first Gulf War, when the only people that won in this committee were the lawyers that filed all the divorce papers for all the soldiers that were getting divorced when they come back. It's huge. We need to make sure we're focusing not so much on the residential side, which that's the glamorous part of these conversations is the zoning for residential. But I would certainly encourage that we look at diversification of our economy and keep in mind business, commercial and industrial, uh, purposes of, of the land. Um, right now, we're very, a very, I dare say, white-collar focused community and the best way to diversify is, is making sure that we have ample opportunities for business and commerce to be able to do the things that, that they need to do. Um, I could expand on this. I say I've just got a couple of minutes here and I'd be happy to entertain any, any specific questions you have. But it would be so easy for these changes to occur and in the absence of adequate grandfathering, um, it would, it's going to very much limit. Remember so many businesses that no longer exist in our community that were pushed aside because of the down, the south downtown redevelopment. They had no place to go. The affordability is not just for, uh, residential housing, it's also for commercial properties. And if you want to push all of these businesses to Potawatomi County and that respective tax base, that's one of the fastest ways this could, could happen is through the, the lack of grandfathering of, of certain properties that maybe have a, an intended or specific purpose that's good today. Alternatively, the myopic approach is the ability to look at things beyond their normal scope. And one of my favorite shows that I don't think it's on anymore is a job called Dirty Jobs. And, you know, there's a great line in the introduction of that show and that is, you know, there's people that do things out there that make life very, uh, very enjoyable, very civilized for the rest of us. And, and those things are things that happen behind the scenes, but those businesses have to have a place to work. Uh, they have to have a place to be able to operate and make sure that we have an appropriate place for them to be able to do those things and, and in harmony with the community, of course, but be able to do those things the, the way they are. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Bruce?
Bruce McMillan, five fifty-five Points Avenue. I did not attend this evening in, intending to make any comments. I'm just here to learn and see what, uh, updates are to, to the process. But the one piece that caught my attention, and I'm sure this is going to take coordination with the county and other entities, our gateways. If you've driven in, uh, from the south side of town lately, uh, it is, uh, needing some severe attention. And I would, I would encourage whatever can be implemented with this particular, uh, set of, uh, updates and ordinances and adoptions, that we sincerely look at, uh, the gateways. I mean, we're, we're coming in, when you get to the city limits, everything really looks pretty doggone good. But, uh, coming, coming in, uh, from the south particularly, uh, needs some very serious attention. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Bruce, I really appreciate you pointing that out, um, because I agree with you. Um, we've had, um, well, the properties, some of them are not kept up well. And, and there's an industrial use there that wasn't envisioned and wasn't there back when we did the cor- entry, the corridor entry thing either. So there's, um, it's, um, it's changed without anybody really paying attention to it. And so, um, that's an important thing. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close public comment and come back to the commission. Any closing thoughts?
I think, uh, you know, we have a long way to go, of course. I do want us to look at getting some input from, uh, Kansas State University. When we talk about gateways, that consistently comes up because when their families come in, that first impression is how they judge everything in ten, fifteen, twenty seconds. And, uh, when we're in meetings with Linda Cook, she has brought it up frequently as well, to see what their vision is for that area as well and what, what we can do together in that, um, aspect. It may not have a huge impact on the UDO composition that we're talking about, but just what their vision is as far as what does the entry positions need to look like? What would they, um, because they go to so many universities and think about these things, what would that entrance, uh, what can they help us with? I guess, um, you know, in those three, three or four entryways.
Just, uh, a couple, let me just add on to that. I mean, I've talked to the county commissioners and I, I, I think if you look across the nation, uh, most county zoning and, and ordinances are not as strict as they are in cities. So as you come in by the airport, you know, we have the time machine that's sitting in there uh, near the brigs, it's, um, not very pleasant. And then you have the same thing as you go out Snyder Highway, that's different. So if you're running into difficulties with the promulgation of these kinds of, um, ordinances with, with the county, please come back and let us know right away. Cause, uh, uh, I just want to make sure that, as, uh, Usha said, when you're coming into the city, you get the right impression.
Sure.
That's always bothered me. I think K-18 was a mar- I think K-18 was a marvelous change for us, but we've got some work to do. The other thing, when you mentioned Aggieville specifically, you know, when we did the Aggieville plan not too long ago, we did some specific things on streetscapes. So are you inferring that we're going to change that now? Or is this just adopting it into what you have?
So we've done two changes already to the Aggieville district. One was really a quick fix to address eliminating vehicular-oriented businesses, like a drive-through, those kind of things. That was the biggest change in that first iteration. The second one was dealing with larger massing issues. So how high buildings can be, where are they going to be located, some limited changes in how it orients to the street. This last iteration will be much more design-specific for the building. So Commissioner Morris's points about how much brick a building should have on it, how much window glazing, allowing for public spaces like courtyards for the public or courtyards for the residents if it's a multi-story apartment building, something like that. That's where a lot of those will come in. The streetscape will occur through the TIP projects for the streetscape, which we'll keep on the public side, and this will not, the UDO really won't incorporate any of those in terms of landscaping, because that's all, I mean, the idea behind Aggieville, we hope, through the master plan and everything we're doing through the UDO, is really building it out in an urban development, lot line to lot line. So all that landscaping would be within the public realm. So we won't address those.
There's a couple of things just to follow up on what David Kreller said, and that is, the idea about capping a commercial enterprise's parking. You know, when somebody like Home Depot or you name it, Target comes in, they know how many parking spots they want. And we've made arrangements for drainage and runoff and all of that kind of thing. So if we were to say, for example, for Home Depot, you can only have one hundred and seventy-five parking spots, they might go somewhere else. So, I mean, I think we've got to make sure that we're not being overly restrictive in ways that don't anticipate trying to get businesses in here. The other thing is we have to keep in mind that when any businessman, whether he's building residential property or commercial property, I mean, he doesn't do this just because he thinks it's a good idea.
Sure.
You know, he looks at land cost, and then he looks at materials and labor, and how much things are going to cost. So that's why you find high prices that come with larger lots and lower prices that come with lots that are closer, or smaller lots with houses closer together, because he's trying to make a profit.
Right.
So, you know, we have to put, somebody, when we're going through this, has to put their businessman's hat on.
Sure. And we certainly have tried. I can't say that the staff is, we haven't developed any Home Depots, those of us in Community Development Department. We don't own any of those, but we've tried to make, figure out what makes sense. Those caps are still pretty high, so we're talking several hundred parking spaces. But to that point, have you ever been to our Home Depot where every lot was full with a business, with a vehicle? Be it employees or customers or otherwise?
No, but it doesn't matter. You know, that's what they chose to have.
I get that, yeah.
And we also asked them to do things about mitigation. I mean, that's when your counterparts in PW get up here and we have a conversation, that's one of the things that we insist we have.
Sure.
Somebody builds something out of concrete or non-permeable material, then we say, you have to have X, Y, and Z to make up for that.
Yeah, you're correct, and we put those caps high. I mean, I just got beat up last night by some neighbors that said, "Part of the flooding issue we have on Wildcat Creek is we filled so much of Home Depot." And so we have to balance it as a community.
But that's nonsense. That's not why Wildcat Creek floods.
You're right, I mean...
I mean, I sent a note to Ron, and I've seen this over and over, and we've got to make sure people understand why Wildcat Creek. And it's not for something we built in Manhattan. It comes from ninety-nine square miles up above us.
You're right. But again, those caps were put there on the high side. I'm really more excited about our efforts on lowering that...
Okay, well, I don't want to argue about that. I'm just telling you that we've got to be careful.
You bet.
Nonetheless, if we talk about this again, I look forward to it, because I actually a hundred percent agree with the caps. We, the most important job the City Commission does is manage land uses, and there's nothing that makes me angrier than looking at a satellite image of Manhattan with a bunch of half-full parking lots. And so a cap is necessary. I also don't think that you're going to get much pushback from a Walmart or a Home Depot to not have to develop half of a lot that they logically do not need, because there are, I don't think that there's probably ever been a time in the city of Manhattan that I've gone to any business that I had trouble finding parking and that was more than a block away from it. Every development decision that we make in this city seems to be fully and completely based on parking, and I think it's nonsensical. And so I'm glad that we have a cap. And if Home Depot goes to another community because they don't have enough parking, I highly doubt, though, again, comparatively to other communities like New York City or any of the major metro areas allowing them to build parking lots like that, probably not. And so I'm glad that we're at least exploring this cap, and I look forward to talking about it more.
If I may, address the gentleman's concern about grandfathering. We, we're not going to rezone any commercial districts. We're not going to downzone any commercial districts. We're just going to convert over, and we haven't eliminated any uses. We've added to that long list of uses. So I'm a hundred percent confident we're not going to inadvertently create a non-conforming situation with any commercial properties. If anything, we've expanded that list and made it easier for, you know, for a property, for a developer or a business owner to go, oh, that's where I could put my coffee shop, or whatever the use is, because we've made that list longer. So I'm real confident we haven't created any non-conformities on the commercial and industrial side. Additionally, we added some that I'm fairly excited about, such as allowing for a limited kind of lab in downtown and Aggieville, where those make sense, you know? Someone just wants to look at Petri dishes and microscope slides, why not right next to campus in Aggieville? So not large animals, not going to have, you know, radiated monkeys flying around everywhere, but we were going through the UDO, allowing those kind of laboratories to occur in Aggieville. So we're expanding those uses, which I think are good.
I'm going to be interested in seeing your further information about the flood, about your plans for the flood designation, other than just knowing you have a category is what we know now, so.
Not a lot has changed in those districts, just because they're super high standards now.
Yeah, the flood ordinance, but, you know, we've got to raise those standards, too. And I'd like to, at some point, get on with that as soon as we can.
Mr. Butler, you look like...
Yeah, it'd be interesting, just one piece of data. You know, we're talking about the size of these parking lots for these big box stores. I'd like to just, you know, know how many parking lots are in Home Depot and how many are in Menards? And does R. Max accommodate that?
Sure.
Or is it below that? And that'd give me a better idea of what I'm talking about, because I agree with the mayor that, you know, these guys that build these stores, you know, they got an idea of what they want to do. And they're also thinking that in the summer, they're going to throw trees and bushes and all that out in the parking lot and use it. And so I think we've got to be cognizant that what we have there needs to fit.
I think the general reaction to us originally establishing the cap is that usually what we hear is that because our regs are so old, my intuition tells me that as they will come asking for it, we've required a percentage more than they were asking for. And, but, your point about how they've used it alternatively, I think is because it was easy for them to do, because they had that. So that just needs to be part of their plan if they're going to do it. But generally, our standards were archaic with regard to the number of vehicles per square foot, and they were way higher than what the developer was asking for, typically.
Yeah, we could definitely do that.
And that's the motivation for the standard.
The decision on citing a Home Depot here isn't made by the guy who's going to manage the store. I can tell you that.
Right. Yeah, and my limited experience in those large developments, it's, I've got ten acres, so I'm going to build X building on it, and the rest of it's going to be parking lot. And it's just, there's not a rhyme or reason other than I got ten acres and it's got to be covered in parking.
That can't possibly be true.
You'd be more surprised than not, that they have...
It might be, but again, if I'm a developer building something, I've got to pay for every single square yard on that property. So I'm just not going to willy-nilly cover it with concrete. All right, anything else?
Very good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.